Okay.
Well, good afternoon, members of the public and welcome to the Wyoming Legislature's listening session in preparation for the upcoming two-day special session, May 15th and 16th, 2020. We're here this afternoon to take public comment both regarding the technology and the process and the rules for the upcoming special session, as well as take any comments regarding any of the probable four bills before us this Friday. We're joined today by both the Majority Floor Leader and the Minority Floor Leader of both the Wyoming House and the Wyoming Senate, alongside your two co-chairmen of the Legislative Committee on Facilities, Technology, and Process. So the six of us are truly here to listen to input from the public around the state in preparation of our special session. We're going to have a three-part meeting today. First, we're going to talk about the process. We have had six people from around Wyoming request to address us today on the process. And then we have nine people to address us regarding some policy matters regarding those bills. After that, we'll probably take a short five or 10-minute break and then come back and address any questions that come in through the duration of this meeting, primarily through the YouTube platform that hopefully many of you are listening on. So with that, is there any opening comments from members of the Listening Committee at this time? Seeing none, our first guest today will be Representative Mike Yen from Jackson. We'll be bringing him in shortly. Hello, Representative Yen, and thank you for joining us today.
Hello, how are you? Thank you for having me, Mr. Chairman.
And you're here today to talk about the legislative process, I understand, on some upcoming concerns with the special session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question primarily is one that was actually answered by staff, but I think it's useful for the public to hear it anyways, which was what would happen if there are questions about the rules in regards to, for example, a point of order on an amendment or something like that, because in the normal session, a Rules Committee gets called up to the stand and they have a discussion. And then there's a chairman of the, there's a ruling of the chairman. So I'm wondering how that process would get laid out in the virtual special session.
Any members of the Listening Committee wish to try and answer that question?
Mr. Co-Chairman, I might take a shot at it, and I'm not exactly sure what we would do in all these cases. I assume most of the Rules Committee members would be present, and it would be possible perhaps to actually have a somewhat unconventional Rules Committee of those that are present. And if we have to add people that aren't present on the Rules Committee in the particular house, it'll, it'll be interesting. And you know, as with everything about this, it's sort of being put together as we go along. But I would think the Rules Committee could still meet in combination of in-person and virtual and still address the issue.
Representative Barlow? They unmute you there. Take off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So thank you, Representative Yen, for the question. And I guess you alluded that our staff had already responded to the question. So it might be appropriate with the chairman's leave to let Director Obrich respond if he has some thought. I guess from my perspective, we have two presiding officers, the President and the Speaker. And certainly it's something I know that the Speaker of the House has thought through and thought of. And while I can't answer, will not answer on his behalf, I think that there are certainly, the presiding officers have thought about it. But maybe, Mr. Chairman, with your leave, based on what Representative Yen said about staff having maybe some thoughts, maybe we see if they would like to offer those. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Director Obrecht, any thoughts or preliminary ideas?
Mr. Chairman, if there is a point of order that required a ruling, it would just be handled like any other point of order. The presiding officer will make that point, will make that determination from the chair. Or you'll also have the ability to call Rules Committee if you want some guidance to help him make that determination. If there is a Rules Committee, we'll send out, we'll do a breakout Zoom session for that Rules Committee with the members of Rules and also whoever the member is who's called the point of order. Rules Committees aren't open to the public, are not open to the rest of the body during regular floor sessions, so they won't be now. But when that Rules Committee is done, the chair will explain his ruling. And then, of course, that ruling then is open to the floor for final adoption if the motion should be made.
Okay, thanks. Senator Raffas, did you have a follow-up question?
Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna weigh in and say that just from a functionality standpoint, Zoom breakout rooms, honestly, you could set up beforehand as a breakout room, the Rules Committee, and expedite that process fairly easily just by having it prefabricated as a standing breakout room, and then add any member that needs to participate as well.
Any follow-up concerns, Representative Yen, or satisfactory answer for the time being? And we'll continue to research the rules for that if that works.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, that's satisfactory.
All right. Thank you, Representative Yen. Look forward to seeing you Friday.
Mr. Chairman, before we go forward.
Senator Case.
Would we let people know on the video feed that we are going to take chat questions in the latter part of this meeting? And we're going to try to spend a lot of time on that, if they're wondering how they can participate now.
Yeah, certainly, if you had not previously signed up with LSO to speak to the Listening Session, you can ask your question on the YouTube platform, and we will get to it after the 14 people who previously requested in order. And so next up will be Representative Schwartz. Senator Raffas, question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just wanted to welcome, we've got about 133 people watching right now, so we do have good participation from the outside. So welcome, everyone, and we look forward to your questions as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Next up, Representative Schwartz from Teton County will be joining us.
And Representative Swanson, he is not on, so I'm gonna bring in Dan Neal.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Neal, to the Listening Session.
Thank you. Oh, I could get the camera on, sorry. Assume you'll get a picture in a minute. Oh, well.
Some days.
Yeah, I have my camera covered, but I don't see the light coming on. I don't know what's up.
I can still hear you, Mr. Neal.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Floor is yours, Mr. Neal.
Thank you.
You are.
There you are.
So I guess my first concern, as you saw in my written testimony, is just that I'm, I don't quite understand why the traditional process was cut so short. It seems to me that even if you treated this more like you'd do the budget bill during the budget session, that would give people more time to absorb what is being done and how it's being done, and then be able to offer suggestions to improve the legislation. So as I brought up, my idea was that if you could extend, extend a special session out over five days, that'd give you three days to, for each of three readings of each of the bills, a day for committee hearings for the appropriate committees in the opposite chamber to review the bills as amended and passed by the opposite chamber. And then, and then the full legislature would have a better idea of how, how differences between the two bills should be resolved and could make more informed votes. So that's, that's the fundamental idea that just seems, it just seems to me like we're, we really are not allowing enough time for people to process what's being done and to offer ideas that could help improve it. And I understand that the, I understand that the considerable amount of control is being given to the executive branch. But it seems to me that, that this, this plan for the special session reduces the executive branch's ability to raise concerns that come up, that sometimes the people at the top don't know about some of the fundamental issues that the people working on the front lines in these state agencies know about. You know, I'm sure we've all seen many times when a, a subofficial in the Department of Transportation or the Workforce Services have pointed out pitfalls that perhaps hadn't been spotted immediately by their, either their superior or by the legislator proposing the legislation. So anyway, that's, that's my general thinking. And you know, I understand that you all must be feeling very committed to the, to the schedule you set up. It's very clear to me that everyone's been working very hard on this. I think the, I've read through the bills, they, you know, they've obviously had a lot of work put into them already. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the long hours that, that, that those bills must represent by, the long hours of work that those bills must represent by all of you. So, but that said, I still, you know, it's, as you all know, I've, I've long been an advocate for public access to this process. I think it's really important. I think it's one of the joys of living in Wyoming that we can have such great access to our legislators and executive branch employees. And I just, I just hate to see us sort of turn our back on this process that I think worked pretty well over the last 100-plus years. So that's the, my general idea. I had a specific question about, about how the infrastructure part of the first bill might work. But I'd at least, at least for now, stand for questions if you have any, any questions for me, Mr. Chairman.
I even have a question for Mr. Neal. Representative Conley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Dan, thank you so much for being here. And if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I thought I'd just take a minute to outline what has happened and how we got to the point of a two-day special session, if that's okay with you. Certainly others could jump in. No, it's all, it's okay. It's only been a couple of weeks since it has been clear that Wyoming would be getting money from the federal government, and then the amount of that money, which is $1.25 billion, that will come straight to the state, in addition to other funds that are directed to agencies for immediate distribution. There was interest in how that money would be distributed. Would it just go to the executive branch, meaning the governor? And the governor then, then distributing it through his office, or is there a role for the legislature? And we came to the agreement, the conclusion, that it's better or best for the state, for both branches, to work together. The government has, the governor has emergency authority to distribute that money without honestly any public input at all. We, as the legislature, have an obligation to stand up programs and then make appropriations, but not with this emergency money, per se. And so the compromise honestly was to come together with a few bills that we all could agree on in terms of the distribution of some of that, that money to start with, in the three periods of time that you see, with some new programs that we know that we need, and then to work on it more over the course of the next couple of months. But to do so, because the money is sitting there, we need to push out that money to our communities. And so the governor called us into a kind of one-day or two-day special session. I'm sure, I'm sure others can jump in to kind of elaborate more on that. But it's certainly my hope that we have a second special session, and honestly, that it will be longer, and for the exact same reasons that you articulated.
Representative Barlow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Neal. So, and I think this goes to support what Minority Leader Conley, Leader Conley has just said is that, I think they, I certainly understand the concern, but I think we're beyond that concern. And so now we're starting to think about what does the next part, next part of the process look like, i.e. a second session, if there's a need for that. And I certainly believe in hearing from my constituency that folks are interested in the legislature staying engaged as we continue through distribution of this, of these funds, but also the most meaningful ways to utilize them in the state. So I think we'll continue to see that. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd just take another moment to respond to another point. 10 minutes ago, I received one of those emails from a, a agency individual and agency professional in our, in our state government, happened to be Workforce Services, as you've happened to mention. And they said, here, here's a, here's a tweak that makes it even more, improves the bill. And so we are still doing that. We're still going through the process. As you know, the bills were first released almost three weeks ago. They were worked two weeks ago. They've been out, I think, now for over about a week in their current form. And we're getting, I'm, at least I am getting lots of comments, both from the public and from colleagues in the legislature and from agencies, saying, what are we trying to get to here? Can we make it better? So I don't know that we're circumventing some of that process. Certainly, the timeline within the session, I understand, is abbreviated, is, feels rushed. But the base work, the work that's going into it, I hope we're still trying to get that done and trying to do it in a meaningful way. At least that's my effort, and I believe that's my colleagues' effort as well. Thank you, Mr.
And I would say, under the Governor's proclamation, we do have up to 20 days that we can use. So there will be an additional 18 days if needed. I'm hearing the same thing from my area of the state that we may need even a second special session as more information becomes available from the federal government. Any other questions for Mr. Neal? Mr. Neal, hopefully that's at least some elucidation on where we're going and trying to quickly get this money to communities and look forward to any continued input in the process you may have. Senator Docstetter?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Neal. If you, before you leave us, just maybe one or two examples of how you would change what we're doing with the rules or anything else? Because you, I've watched you be a part of this in some form or fashion for many years now.
Dear Neal, any, yeah, input you'd like to provide?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator Docstetter, basically, I was, I was looking for something that I thought could be pretty efficient and wouldn't chew up a lot of time. That's why I, and, and I see that you're using the mirror process on these bills anyway. So I, that was, that was my main idea, is just why not, why not give these a day's reading? We know during the budget session that you even put in a day's break in, in the budget, in the series of three hearings, so that people have time, legislators and their constituents have time to get one last long look at the, at the measure and propose any specific amendments. What, so that's, that was my basic idea, was just, well, you know, you could extend it to five days. You could even, at that, you could even include one of those quiet days to allow people to offer specific suggestions that they then could try to go to each side of the legislature to get a, you know, what you call a mirror amendment approved. So that's my thinking. The, and you know, I, I know that people are gonna have hundreds of questions about this legislation. My own is on, on this infrastructure question, like, I know that, for example, up in Crook County, Senators, Senator Driscoll and Representative Lindholm have proposed that to the community there that they're facing a once-in-a-generation opportunity to build a new hospital. Now, that community may need that infrastructure, but my, my concern is that people who have, or areas where legislators seem to be particularly focused on the availability of this money and how it could be used in their particular community, that some communities might get a larger share of the pot than they otherwise might. And so my question is, how, how will that, how will the legislature avoid there sort of being a quick grab for that infrastructure money? That, you know, I mean, by and large, I'm a big supporter of infrastructure. I, I like the work that was done in Casper in 2009 and 2010 with TARP, well, I guess, suppose it wasn't TARP money, but some of the reconstruction money that, that helped build streets downtown really did improve the community and provided local jobs at the same time. So I understand that if, you know, that this hospital project in Crook County might be a completely viable infrastructure project, but how do you, how do you control what could be a sort of Oklahoma land rush for that money?
Representative Barlow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I appreciate that concern and that comment. And so I'll take, give a couple of suggestions about how I think we are trying to take a measured approach. First, the, the bill before us, the, the bill that has the general appropriation, a lot's the money in blocks, 400 and some million, then another 400 and some million, et cetera. So it's not, all the money isn't available to the executive branch at one time. Second, I would respectfully suggest that we are still awaiting and believe that there's forthcoming guidance out of the federal government on some of the questions that you pose, such as infrastructure. How, how can we use it? How can it be used? So I think that is, and so I think that there's still some uncertainty about that particular component. The third thing I would say is that I think this is a second thing second. This is that longer session. This is the process you talked about in your opening comments, where it was actually placed on the Management Council COVID-related topics last week, last Friday, to be considered for infrastructure, hospital infrastructure, et cetera. So I think three things. One, we've kind of partitioned the money in, in sequence. Two, we're, we believe with coming guidance, we are waiting. And three, we're not, I don't believe, taking it up in this session and saying, these things get it. Particularly for the private side. I would say that one of the bills does mention the state hospital and the Life Resource Center. So that, that aside, but for these other community-type facilities, I think that, that was specifically put forth as an interim topic for a standing committee to work on between now and that second session that I would resist of, Mr. Neal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Raffas?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and to Mr. Neal's question as well. It's not just Capcom with regard to the hospitals that are, is part of the consideration. It's the fact that we anticipate ongoing healthcare needs and rural healthcare needs throughout the state. So as we're looking at these projects and these Capcom projects, it's not just, hey, we need to stimulate the economy. It's also, hey, we need to meet the healthcare needs of these rural communities. So we do have some communities around the state where we know there'll be challenges in the future due to COVID and, and other healthcare challenges. So I think it's a, it's a more complicated question than just a land rush for Capcom funds. It has a lot to do with trying to meet the healthcare needs of the state, too. So you see a lot of the focus in the bill recognizes that, that we're looking for mental health, which, once again, in this circumstance is becoming more and more critical. We're looking to healthcare facilities around the state that we've been wrestling with for years, and now we finally need to get to the point where we can address them. And then rural healthcare needs, where we honestly just have places throughout the state that lack sufficient resources right now to meet the needs, if, if we truly have a significant growth in the number of identified cases and the needs.
Senator Case?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point to the schedule, and we have a lot of people waiting in the, in the rooms. And then we have a whole list of chat from the YouTube video, and I don't think we can solve all these problems. Mr. Neal, we have differences of opinion on this committee about, and we're not really a real committee, we're not taking any action. We're all individuals coming together to try to make the process better. But we can't solve all of these problems. We're very interested in hearing what you think they are, and we'll keep working on them. These folks have been working with Management Council for a long time on this issue. And it's, it's a big lift even to have this Listening Session and to try to get through our big job today. It's rough.
All right. With that, thank you very much, Mr. Neal. Our next guest will be Representative Schwartz from Teton County. It's my understanding he is now going to be able to join us. And there he is. Welcome, Representative Schwartz. Is your audio still connecting?
He's on mute.
You're still on mute, Representative Schwartz?
He may not be able to demute, Kenny?
Let's try that.
There you go.
I apologize for my tardiness. So the original reason I wanted to comment is related to the attendance at the session. I, I don't know where the current policy is at about whether all legislators are invited to come to the Capitol and participate via Zoom in person. But I really don't think it's a wise policy for a couple of reasons. The first is, we are having a lot of people come to Cheyenne to do this from throughout the state. And that creates a possibility of bringing more virus to Cheyenne, which is not a great idea. Then we're gonna have everybody in this relatively confined area of the Capitol for two days. And then everybody will return to their homes and potentially take the virus back to that community. I am personally not coming. I'm a member of a number of high-risk categories, and it would be incredibly unwise for me to go. But I'm really not sure it's wise for any of us to go. I almost consider it to be a little irresponsible for us to promote the idea that it would be wise for legislators to come, expose staff, expose people in Cheyenne. That was what I listed my comments on. I could talk about many other subjects, but I will stop there and would be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions, Representative Schwartz, at this time? Seeing none at this time, certainly appreciate you joining us, Representative Schwartz. And I know from the emails that have gone out, there have been concerns on both sides that some legislators feel all of us need to be in the Capitol, and some feel none of us, with the COVID-19 event going on, should be joining in person. It's my understanding there is only a limited number of actual, of legislators coming to Cheyenne, and many of them here in Laramie County, and primarily for internet technology reasons. We have several, I know, committee chairman who lived in difficult internet access places in eastern and northern Laramie County will be coming to the Capitol area, still secluded from one another, but at least in a high-internet area for, for proper Zoom capabilities. So that's my understanding of what's happening Friday. With that, look forward to seeing you.
Nice to see you all.
Next up will be Christopher Merrill from the Equality State Policy Center.
Senator Raffas has his hand up.
Senator Raffas, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Merrill's joining, I, I just would say, I hope legislators will be thoughtful. And if they don't have a specific need to be at the Capitol, that they use good judgment and do this virtually. I think that's better for protecting our staff, protecting other legislators, and ensuring that we flatten the curve. So I hope all legislators will really take that very seriously and only join in Cheyenne if absolutely necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Merrill from the Equality State Policy Center, welcome to the Listening Session. Pleased to hear your comments today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said, I'm Chris Merrill, the Executive Director of the Equality State Policy Center. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said, I'm Chris Merrill, the Executive Director of the Equality State Policy Center. Thanks for this opportunity today. And I just really want to thank you all for the enormous amount of effort you've been putting in already, trying to address the COVID nineteen crisis. And I'm going to confine my comments today, you also have them in written form, I believe, to. Some observations and recommendations around the technology side of things for the interest of just the public involvement. And, and making it as easy as possible for the public to participate and engage. So. I think one, one thing that comes up at least, you know, and it was mentioned earlier. There are a lot of people in Wyoming who don't have reliable enough internet connection or enough broadband in general to stream video. And on my board, for example, we had a Zoom meeting on Monday and some board members cannot participate in the video. Part, part of that meeting. And so they call in on the phone. We have an audio option. So I would hope you'd consider, that was something the management council did do initially, and I think it's a great idea. I hope you consider offering an audio only option for the public for all the meetings. And I don't know, you know, that could be something online, but that also probably the simplest thing would just be a phone number that people can call in and listen to the meetings that way. The other suggestions I have have to do with placeholders. And this is, so when you stream a meeting, as it's been operating right now, you go to the YouTube channel. And if the, if the meeting hasn't started yet, the video hasn't been posted yet, so you have to keep refreshing the page. So I would recommend that you have a placeholder stream starting, you know, ten minutes before the meeting or thereabouts. That just says, you know, the meeting or the session will begin soon. And so people can go to the page, start the stream, and then they'll be tuning in as soon as it starts and they won't miss anything. Similarly, I recommend a technical difficulties placeholder on the stream as well. In case, in case the stream cuts out, as happened in the recent minerals committee meeting. So people know that you know that there's an issue and that the meeting will reconvene soon. Some, something along those lines. The next recommendation I have has to do with the, you know, the pace has been really fast. And this has been a challenge for, I know for, for myself and for my board members. A lot of times, just due to the pace, there's meeting materials that aren't posted ahead of time and probably couldn't have been. And. There are last minute changes to materials. Since we have the ability to post things in real time, I just recommend that you do that. As documents are updated, as documents become available, you know, post them online. In real time and, you know, committee chairs or, or leaders in the session can announce that the document's available and let the public know where they can see it. The next one I have might, might seem a little silly, but, but I don't think it is. So in these Zoom meetings so far, sometimes we are in gallery view where we can see all of the members. And sometimes it has switched to showing only the person who's speaking. And my recommendation is to keep it in gallery, in gallery view at all times. Just so members of the public can see all the legislators who are participating. And it's, it's more similar to the traditional experience where you can attend a meeting in person or you can sit in the gallery and watch. You know, watch the different chambers operate. The next one I had was a chat option, and I see you're experimenting with that today. I think that's a good idea to, to, to figure out how to incorporate the chat option if possible. I, I, I think it would have to be moderated, of course, to make sure people follow decorum and, and are on topic, et cetera. But, but it would be great if you could incorporate that. And then the last recommendation I have. Is just somehow letting the public know how best to contact their legislators while the session is going on. And in I, in an ideal world, maybe there would be some sort of virtual lobby. Where, where people could just go online and send in a note to a legislator. But I, you know, that might not be possible in the short term, but it's just, it's just a, it's, it's something to consider. In the very least, just let people know how to contact their legislators while the, while the process is unfolding. And those, those are the topics I just wanted to cover today.
Okay. I, I think those are all great topics and comments, and I'm not sure how many of them we can get accomplished by Friday. But we'll certainly look into several of those. All legislators will have access to their email. There is a legislative, legislative hotline for comments from the public. But we could reiterate that at the beginning of the special session for the audience watching from around the state to be able to understand. They can email all legislators at once, their individual legislators as the time comes. Any questions for Mr. Merrill? Senator office.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Not a question, but I just wanted to address a couple of the things that Mr. Merrill said. The first one is with regard to the gallery view versus individual view. We decided as management council that we would use gallery view as, as our, our intended view. And I, I think anytime you, you saw anything other than gallery view, that was just technical. Challenges where somebody clicked something or it didn't start up right or whatever else, which we're going to see plenty of. I think particularly in this first session. As far as the, the chat feature, we, we've had discussions about trying to find a good system for that. I don't know how good it will be in this first special session, but we're going to continue working towards that. Because we want to be able to ensure that there is good public engagement and comment. But we don't really have a, an ideal solution yet. The, the comments that we'll use today hopefully will work reasonably well. But the reality is it would be better if it were a moderated system that had. Verification of identity and, and a lot of other features that we, we don't have on the platform we have. So we're still exploring that. And if you actually have any ideas or through your research, you find any platforms that prove useful and that would work better. For that chat interface, please let us know because it, it's an area we're exploring and we know is imperfect.
Okay. With that, thank you very, Senator Doster.
Just quickly, the main point we're trying to do here is just to reach out, make it work digitally, starting with this listening session and then going into the session from there. We're, we're trying to make, make do with what we have in, and obviously we'll learn some, learn a few things this first go around. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for joining us today, Mr. Merrill. It's a pleasure to hear from you. Next up, we'll have Rebecca Smith joining us. And we'll wait for her audio to click on. It seems to have, welcome Ms. Smith to this listening session. Floor is yours.
Thank you. I just wanted to. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Miss, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Senator office.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt and, and Becca, I know this is going to take a second before you hear it. But there's a five second time delay from reality and YouTube. So you need to make sure that you're not watching us on YouTube, but are in fact listening to us and watching us on the, the Zoom interface, please. And things will go a lot smoother.
Thank you for that tip. I, I hope I have that fixed now. Mr. Chairman and members of committee, thank you for having this special listening session. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to participate in this format. And so I wanted to say for the technology conversation that participating by Zoom has been. A really great opportunity to be there. And I think that even though we have extenuating circumstances right now, where people aren't able to travel as much. It's something to consider for the future that this format actually is more accessible for a lot of people. And I would love to see an option for participating via Zoom continue for folks that want to get involved, but can't necessarily come to Cheyenne. So thank you again for, for all your work in getting this, this format available to folks. And yeah, I, that's all I say on that. I also wanted to say that with respect to Medicaid expansion, that I wanted to speak in favor of it. And as a director of the Wyoming Women's Foundation, we're concerned about the fact that before the COVID event. Women were certainly overrepresented as potential enrollees. And knowing that during this time, more women have been affected by job losses or by. Becoming less employed or underemployed, there are more folks that are moving into that category that may be. Affected or able to join or enroll through Medicaid expansion if that happens. So I would encourage that to be something that you strongly consider in the near future. And then last, I just wanted to say that as a nonprofit organization, it would be great to see nonprofits added. As an entity that could apply for care funds, because right now especially the work of nonprofits is so important in keeping Wyoming strong. So I really hope that you'll consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Smith from the Wyoming Women's Foundation, Representative Connolly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Becca, thank you for being here. And just so you know that Medicaid expansion was explicitly put on the Revenue Committee's COVID nineteen interim topic agenda. So we've got actually the two chairs of revenue here as well, and they can talk about its placement. So we've got that one and no, in my, from, in my mind, when we talk about businesses in Wyoming. We're talking about the private sector and nonprofits are included as, as members of the private sector. If we need to take a harder and better look at that, know that, that, I thank you for your comment and I'll be looking for that.
All right. Well, with that, thank you very much, Ms. Smith for joining us today. And I appreciate the Zoom video feed and we're still getting it worked out as well. And we'll have a many of more opportunities through the interim to perfect this. Next up will be Connie Wilbert. And we'll give Ms. Wilbert about thirty seconds to.
Chairman sponsor. She actually just emailed a few minutes ago that she would be unable to attend, so we're going to go to Ramsey Scott.
Okay. And committee, as you'll see from the agenda, the first six people were really on the process. And now we're getting to people who have comments on either the bills before us or specific policies. Senator office, did you have a, a comment before we get started from Mr. Scott?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, there was a question. I was just following the YouTube discussion and there was a question about whether both sessions would be streamed independently. The House and the Senate so that people could watch them both on different devices. And so I just wanted to clarify that both will be streamed separately, and so that will be a possibility. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And with that, Mr. Scott, welcome, welcome to this afternoon's listening session. Pleased you could join us.
Thank you so much, Representative Anderson, and the rest of the listening committee. We, Ramsey Scott with the Alzheimer's Association Wyoming chapter, we really appreciate the, the, the opportunity to be able to connect with you all, even in these sort of extraordinary times. I sent my testimony in earlier and I'll sort of highlight some of it since, and we've got a lot of people looking to have a chance to, to binge your ear on this. You know, we're really appreciative of all the work that the legislature and the executive branch, LSO, has done. And crafting these bills so quickly and addressing so many things. But, you know, as the legislature works to address the, the real health and economic hardships that are facing Wyoming, we implore you to. Begin to really look at ways to proactively deal with the hardships that our fellow neighbors, our loved ones are dealing with in long-term care. They have been at the front lines of this virus and have suffered the most. Their way of life has changed. The visits that they live for have been ended. And more than, and they're also facing real serious hardships when it comes to their own personal health. More than a third of that, all the deaths in the United States from this horrible virus have come in long-term hair, care facilities. And those of our older, our older citizens are the ones affected most by this. You know, I have sent in a, from our, from our group, we're recommending this nationally across the country. To, for legislatures, executive branches to work on four real main areas to protect and to bolster the, the, the health of those living in long-term. One is testing. We're, we're asking that all resident staff and visitors need to have access to rapid testing. We need a very robust reporting feature that not only is able to sort of gather all those sort of testings, whether it be positive, negative. But then be able to put those online and be able to act accordingly. We need to be able to, the government needs to be able to surge activity to be able to secure and deal with any outbreaks as they occur. And we need to major that our long-term care facilities, our nursing homes, our assisted living facilities have access to all the PPE that they need. And along with training as well. Like I said, I've sent our full list of policy recommendations to LSO and hopefully those will work their way through as this week we all meet. But, you know, the, in the bills that you are addressing, you deal with the real financial hardships that a lot of our medical providers are dealing with. And you've worked to try and address those, but we really want to see you guys take the next step. And to, to work maybe with the Governor Gordon on trying to find ways to, to really strengthen the protections for our long-term care residents. We just, this money provides us an opportunity that we might not be able to do. You know, might be able to do on our own with our own financial resources. So I love for you guys just to take a look at that, to be able to sort of see whether or not that's something that can be added or maybe even done in a subsequent. Bill or just with working with Governor Gordon. And we're more than happy to help in any way we can, whether it be with materials, whether it be potential ways that this could work or any other things that we can provide. So I appreciate your time and I, I stand for any questions.
Questions, Mr. Scott. Seeing none, certainly an important message of Representative Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not really a question, but I, I should probably, I'll just say this upfront. So I think it carries through for several other healthcare related testimonies I think we're going to receive. This, in this first things, first session, as most people will note, is we're giving a lot of latitude to the executive branch and a pile of money. Part of the care's money, access to that, to endeavor to get to some of those, those important issues. So I hope you're reaching out to the executive branch with these types of suggestions, the specificity that your suggestions bring. And certainly they have policy folks that are receiving these things and a, in a group, I understand, that is starting to kind of prioritize them, rank them. So that as, as they see needs, they can get to them first. And then if those needs aren't being met, when we reconvene for that longer session with the more thoughtful and, and longer type, longer term program type things in mind. We can take them up if they're not being looked at. So I just encourage all healthcare folks, well, anybody that has this interest that be talking to your, your, your contacts in the executive branch. Because they're going to have a lot of ability to make some of these, at least initiate some of these.
Thank you, Representative Barlow, Representative Anderson. We, we have already sent these out as well. But wanted to let y'all know what we're sort of asking and any chance to get to speak to the legislature, even from my living room, our home office here is always going to be taken.
All right. Certainly appreciate having you. Have a good day, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Senator. I'll take care.
Next up committee is Joe Ramirez. As I'm looking in the waiting room, I don't see him, but there is a cell phone, which I'm going to admit, and we will hope it's Mr. Ramirez. Give it just a second. Good afternoon. Welcome to the listening session. Can you hear us? Hello?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, you, the floor is yours.
You hear me?
Yep, is this Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, I'm here. Oh, I can hear you, yes. Okay.
All right. Welcome.
Your floor is yours.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, cool, cool, cool. You can't see me, but this, this Zoom stuff makes me crazy. But I'm, I'm a, all right, I'm a retired citizen, 68 years old.
And you might want to turn off your YouTube channel, so we could hear you better.
How's that?
Better.
All right. I just YouTubed you off.
Excellent.
But thank you guys for letting me speak. I'm retired. The only real stake I have in this is that you guys be real diligent with that money that's been given to you by the federal government to take care of Wyoming citizens, all of Wyoming citizens, not just your constituents, and not just the guys you voted for, but the 40, 100-some-thousand folks we have in Wyoming that possibly need this. I live in a neighborhood, I've been in the neighborhood for 20 years, and it's filled with a lot of limited income folks, a lot of blue collar people that really been affected by this crisis. And we really need to take and make sure that that group is really taken care of either with sufficient unemployment, sufficient programs for eviction that actually provides money to the landlords, sufficient money to food banks to take care of that, sufficient money to the mental health folks. Just, you guys got to just be real diligent, I hope. That's all I've got to say. I don't have any real thought process, other than this is a lot of money you guys have been given responsibility for. And you really need to use it wisely for the citizens of Wyoming. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramirez, for joining us today. And as we previously stated, lots of discussions from legislative branch, as well as the executive branch, with the governor having some oversight, and then going before the, the state land and investment board on many of these projects. And so we're certainly optimistic this money will get out to all places in Wyoming, which is desperately needed for all of our workers and our businesses. So that is certainly the intent and the hope, and we're trying to do it as quickly and efficiently as possible. So thank you again for joining us. Have a good rest of your day.
Thank you.
Next up will be Mr. Scott Meyer from the Wyoming Banking Association. And he's currently on the phone. Hello, Mr. Meyer.
Hello.
Welcome to this afternoon's listening session. We're happy to have you.
Thank you. I, Mr. Chairman, how are you?
Doing well. But you'll need to turn off your YouTube channel while you present to us.
How's that? Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I, I don't know that I have too much to, to offer here regarding the technical aspects and everything. I was just, and I know that Senator Rothfuss has heard my comments before, but I just wanted to, I guess, look for an opportunity to mention to all of you that, that as, I'm sure you've received a lot of phone calls around the topic of the money that is supposed to be distributed out to small businesses, and how that's going to happen. And part of that is with the loan proceeds. I'm sure you've received calls. I have received a lot of calls from bankers. And the comment that I just wanted to mention to all you is that banks certainly have the infrastructure to originate management, managed loans. But the time, by the time you have terms that are palatable and the cost goes up, they, they're just not sure this is a doable thing, unless we have some input into it. And banks certainly want to do their part to help heal the economy, but pushing the banks to be the mechanism for loan products is not necessarily good for small businesses, the banks, their staff, et cetera. So I think the general consensus we got from the, from small business owners is that they're more worried about servicing existing loans and not adding to new obligations. And with that respect, they would rather have it be grants as opposed to loans.
All right. Senator Doc Stetter.
And follow up, Mr. Meyer. That's what I gather from the Bankers Association. That's what we're hearing across from, across the state. Yet we've got a bill that's going through that doesn't address that. It, it puts it in the loan category. And our frontline bankers are telling us it needs to be in a grant category, but perhaps with some added sideboards to it. Is that a correct summary?
Mr. Meyer.
Chairman, Representative Doc Stetter, I would tell you honestly, that I think that is, I think the biggest question before the banks right now is, is one, can the Wyoming Business Council handle any of this stuff? And my understanding is no, that they're not really set to do that kind of thing. Second, is there any kind of home harmless language that would be given to the banks if they do do this kind of stuff? The third is that what kind of participation will the banks be allowed to participate with, with certain topics such as terms of the law and loan documents? And then you get into the idea of the protected and priority security interests, how all that stuff works. I'm just not sure. But I will tell you that your community bankers, they know what kind of damage the current crisis is doing. They do know full well that, that you guys and your colleagues are all aware of what might be happening as well. The community bankers have stepped up and processed impressive PPP loan volumes. So they're not afraid of working on extra time for the benefit of the small business customers. But at the same time, it's probably, it may be unfair to expect banks to generate additional loan volume when they're dealing with all the PPP stuff. So right now, I think what I'm trying to tell you is the businesses need help now with few strings attached. Processing the funds as long as will probably likely add to costs and only serve to hamstring or delay, or maybe even constrain businesses. So we've all seen tough times. You guys, the businesses, whatever, my idea is that this has a potential to be even worse than before. And if we're going to really fully open the economy today, the damage really has a lengthy and far-reaching repercussions, and I just don't want to make it worse.
Further questions or comments for Mr. Meyer?
Those are good.
Okay. Seeing none. Thank you very much, Scott. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you.
Next up will be Carla Gregorio. Pull her to the floor here.
I don't hear in the waiting room, Chairman's sponsor.
I didn't see her earlier, so she jumps back in. We'll, we'll bring her back at that time. Next on the agenda would be Tate Mullen, the Wyoming Education Association. We'll give him a second to connect his audio. Good afternoon, Mr. Mullen.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, how's everybody doing?
Good.
Good, good. My name is Tate Mullen. I'm the Government Relations Director for the Wyoming Education Association. As an active member of the Healthy Wyoming Coalition, I am here to speak to you today as an advocate for Medicaid expansion as a viable policy solution to the COVID-19 outbreak. So as we all know, the state has only begun to witness the economic impacts of the outbreak. These impacts are going to be witnessed in every city, every county, and every region across the state. They are going to impact service provision. They are going to impact every economic sector, including education, and including our extraction industries, which have already seen substantial workforce reductions. So when access to health insurance or healthcare is tied to a job, the negative impacts to an individual or family, when somebody loses that job are made exponentially worse. Medicaid expansion will help reduce these impacts for thousands of Wyoming citizens. For the individual, the loss of access to healthcare, health insurance because of the loss of a job is very extremely trying, emotional, difficult, and personal ordeal. The loss of healthcare for some, or loss of access to healthcare for some, results in negative health consequences and substantial financial debt. For the state, these impacts bear a significant financial burden, as the cost of emergency care or no care at all is, is particularly the case most of the time, is passed directly onto healthcare facilities and the citizens of Wyoming. For those who have insurance, they will continue to pay for the uninsured, and they will continue to see higher costs, including higher premiums. New polling has demonstrated that Wyoming citizens overwhelmingly support Medicaid expansion to protect their families, their friends, their neighbors. Businesses also benefit from Medicaid expansion. Having a healthier workforce, those employees take less sick days, which give that business a economic edge over, or a competitive edge over their competitors in non-expansion states. This same principle holds true for education. Educators, administrators, paraprofessionals, students, families across the state benefit from, benefit from Medicaid expansion, as it provides access to health insurance and ultimately healthcare, even in our most rural areas of the state. Healthy students, they just miss less time in school. That less missed time in school correlates directly to better performance. Access to this healthcare allows districts like businesses to compete with neighboring states in regard to attracting, and what is now the big focus, is retaining those high-quality, high-caliber teachers that have made our education system such a success. So analysis, analysis finds effects of expansion on numerous economic outcomes, including state budget savings, revenue gains, and overall economic growth. Multiple studies have also demonstrated that expansion can result in state savings by offsetting costs in other areas. You know, I know these are difficult times. I know the road ahead is going to be extremely difficult. And I want to take this time to thank everybody here and on this committee for the work that you are doing and will continue to do, and everybody in the legislature for the work that you're doing to address the COVID outbreak, outbreak. And at that time, at this time, I'll, I'll take questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Mullen? Seeing none from the committee this time. Certainly appreciate you stopping by this afternoon, Tate, and thanks for your continued work on behalf of education in this state.
My pleasure. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next up will be Jason Minser. We'll bringing him in now. And just to remind members of the public, we have about four more people who've requested to speak. And then we'll take a short break and start taking comments that we've received over email and from our YouTube live broadcast here in about 15 minutes, and go through some of those questions as best we can as well. So with that, welcome, Mr. Minser, to this afternoon's listening session. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Minser from the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I'm going to be pretty brief today. I didn't get all my comments into my written testimony. I apologize for that. First off, I, I thought that Chris Merrill brought some very good points to the table regarding public access to the legislature during special sessions. And we'd just like to echo the comments that he made in that area. There are two issues that I would like to see the legislature bring up, likely as parts, well, one is a part of, of this week's special session and one long-term. The first of which has already been mentioned, and that is that nonprofits should have an ability to apply for, for cares funding. And it was very well stated earlier in the meeting why that's important. But we have tons of nonprofits across the state that are doing great work in, in keeping folks employed and doing that work in their local communities is, is important. Secondly, I will echo the comments in support of Medicaid expansion and how that will help not only our, our healthcare systems and our individuals, but it will also help the economy of Wyoming. You know, the bottom line, the state pays 10% of that care, and the federal government would pay 90% of that in its additional dollars coming into the state, its additional healthy people in the state, and it's less cost shifting. So we see that as a really positive piece for the state. The bottom line for us, if folks have access to affordable cancer screenings and affordable cancer treatment, we have really helped cancer rates and cancer death rates in Wyoming. So I will be super brief today and leave it at that. If folks have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Minser, Representative Connolly?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Minser, I'm curious, did you find any language in any of the four bills that are out there for consideration for the special session that you feel like are excluding nonprofits from participation?
Mr. Minser.
Mr. Chairman and Representative Connolly, I did not see anything that excluded them specifically, but I did not see anything that included them either. And, you know, erring, erring on the side of caution, I would certainly be more comfortable if they were specifically listed, like several of the other entities.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much for joining us today, Mr. Minser. And I always appreciate your comments. Next up will be Marguerite Herman from the League of Women Voters. Welcome, Marguerite. We know your audio is connecting. And you should.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was at another meeting. So have I been admitted into the room? Is that, is that my status?
You have, Ms. Herman, and the floor is now yours.
Okay. So I thank you very much. So just real briefly, just the points I kind of included in my, my message. First of all, thank you for your efforts to make this session efficient and focused and fair to the legislative process with technology that is not ideal for the process. Given flexibility to legislators, I hope the purpose of responding to the COVID-19 emergency is not derailed by other issues, especially proposals that might have the effect of constraining voting. And we've seen these bills during the past session. I just hope they're not going to be raised. It's going to be difficult having the elections as it is. And that brings me to the third point. In that vein, please consider somewhere in this session or future, special installments, giving county clerks the authority and funding to conduct mail-in elections, as they have conducted successfully on a smaller scale before. So anything that you can do to give them the, the resources to do countywide by mail-in ballot, I encourage you to fit that in. Again, I don't know where it would land, but wherever it's appropriate. Fourth, thank you for adding Medicaid expansion to the list of COVID-19 related relief measures and assigning it to the Revenue Committee, where it will get the work it deserves and be ready for full legislative consideration. It's estimated that 40% of the newly jobless workers will be uninsured. We can address it by allowing these workers to apply for Medicaid. It is time to accept the federal funds to provide insurance and healthcare to our low-wage adults, to enable them to pay their medical bills, and stabilize our healthcare system in Wyoming. Finally, I know you are already wrestling with this, but the shortened time allowed for this session for working bills really leaves the public on the sidelines of the process. I know people can communicate with legislators through text, email, Twitter, et cetera, but you don't want legislators to be distracted by looking at their screens all the time. Plus, you know, anything you can do also, and I know you've already considered this, but making it easy to follow the voting so that people who, and I, you're going to have a lot of people who are not used to following things online, but where they can see votes when appropriate, you know, standing division. I know all you're supposed to get is a head count, and I don't know how you work that. Everything's going to have their name attached to it. But I think that's going to be an important piece of the transparency, a word that is used heavily here. And if, if, you know, in future sessions, I know this is a tight session, two days. If you learn that it is impossible to do really a good job in two, two days, I would kind of hope that maybe in the future sessions or longer than that, I know I'm getting ahead of myself here. But if you follow, but if, if you think in your opinion, the process is suffering too much, I hope you will just explore the idea of making it a three or four-day session. And I know you, there's talk of a one in July and one in October. And that concludes my comments. I, I think I've watched the Management Council meetings, and I want to compliment everyone on truly sincere effort. I mean, I've been impressed with the emphasis on the integrity of the process, on still allowing some flexibility to legislators to amend and add things, yet keeping things really focused. And so anyway, that concludes my remarks. And if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Questions from Ms. Herman, anyone?
Oh, I forgot to mention, I'm legal women voters, that the people ostensibly I'm representing here. So I'm sorry.
All right. Representative Connolly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Marguerite, thank you for being here. Just to comment on how we've talked about the voting and our desire for transparency that, that you mentioned, and I know that the league and many people are interested. You'll notice that we raise our hands. And so the, the first line, I guess what we've decided, or what to expect, is that the first line for voting will be the quick raise of hands. And if there is any ambiguity, right, if, if the presiding officer can't immediately tell, there'll be no kind of standing division, because obviously that can't happen. We'll just go to a roll call vote. So it's possible. That's all you'll see is this or a roll call.
So, okay. And I, I appreciate making things as transparent as possible. And I know So, okay. And I, I appreciate making things as transparent as possible. And I know roll call will add to the time, but thank you for that.
Thank you. And he, Representative Barlow, question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just to follow up on the elections issue that Ms. Herman mentioned. So it certainly was part of the discussion that management council had and others have had. And we received a letter from the Secretary of State stating that he believed that he had both the authorities and the resources to assist counties in fulfilling their election obligations. And what I understood additionally with increased mail or absentee ballots. So I, I'm not saying that's exhaustive and it may need to continue to be looked at, but we did, at least the legislature did receive a letter from the Secretary of State stating he believed he had the resources and authority to accommodate all the needs. So thank you, Ms. Herman, for that reminder and we'll continue.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. With that, thank you, Marguerite.
Thank you and have a great day. Thanks very much.
Next up will be Tom Lacob from AARP. Entering the room now. Good afternoon, Mr. Lacob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Floor is yours.
Thank you much. My name is Tom Lacob. I'm the Associate State Director for AARP Wyoming. We'd like to bring up three topics as you work towards the second. See where that goes. First, AARP would like to note its support of, of study of Medicaid expansion again in Wyoming. AARP represents members age 15 over around the country, and that includes 83,000 members in the state of Wyoming. While our members, most of our members are Medicare age, the numbers from last year's December Medicaid expansion study with the Department of Health suggests about one third of those who would be newly eligible for Medicaid expansion if passed would have been over the age of 50. In other words, about 7,000 of the 19,000 who would become newly eligible for Medicaid expansion should it pass would have been 50-year-old. Second, I want to thank the council and legislature for making broadband and telehealth the study topic for several different committees. AARP wholeheartedly supports those efforts for faster and more reliable internet in Wyoming as well as the good it can support. We're working with a number of groups who have similar missions. We're happy to connect you with the work being done by the Wyoming Broadband Advisory Council, Wyoming Telehealth Consortium, the Wyoming Telehealth Network, and the Wyoming Business Alliance's Technology Subcommittee, should you find that helpful. Finally, I'd like to make a pitch for residents in long-term care settings. As in-person visitations in nursing homes and other residential care facilities are largely halted, virtual visitation between residents and their loved ones is critical. We appreciate the fact that Judiciary Committee is looking into this. We also very much appreciate the work of the Department of Health, Leading Age, and others for helping folks remain connected during the pandemic. The Wyoming Department of Health tells us the state is currently using civil penalty reinvestment funds to purchase technology for nursing homes to fulfill virtual visitations around the state of Wyoming. AARP appreciates the fact that over one third of the state's skilled nursing facilities have already applied for these monies to, to purchase that technology. We also, we do urge the state to encourage or consider requiring nursing homes and other residential care facilities where visitors are restricted to make available and facilitate virtual visitations by video conference or other technologies for residents or their loved ones. So that is, that is my testimony today. I'd be happy to, to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from Mr. Lacob and AARP. Saying none at this time. Thank you very much, Tom. Always a pleasure seeing you. Enjoy the rest of your Tuesday.
Thank you for the time.
Yep. Next up will be Eric Bowley with the Wyoming Hospital Association. As we're welcoming him to the room. Good afternoon, Mr. Bowley.
Hello, Chairman. How are you?
I'm having a great day.
Good. Thank, thanks for taking a few minutes to, to listen to me pontificate here. This is really important work that you guys are doing and appreciate it. We haven't really had a chance to weigh in too heavily on this, but have some ideas and some answers to some of the things that have come up today. There, the cares money is of course very, very important to both our hospital members and to our long-term care members. And I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you that this is National Hospital Week and we get to celebrate the heroes that we have in our state that are protecting lives while risking their own. So hopefully we can recognize them for the hard work that they've been doing. In our long-term care, care facilities, we're bucking the trend. We have no confirmed COVID cases, which is unheard of in other states.
Amen.
Fortunately that way. Yeah, yeah, it's been great. You know, we've met with the governor and talked to him a little bit about using some of this money, but I think there's some low hanging fruit out there that we could u- utilize quickly. And then I think there are some other things that we could consider as we move forward. That the low hanging fruit, of course, is, is PPE. A lot of our facilities have spent a great deal of money on protect, protective equipment, both in long-term care and in the hospitals. One thing that we found is that the stockpile was, was basically inadequate. And as we prepare going forward, I think we need to make sure our stockpiles are a lot larger, especially as we get into the fall time. And so I think that's a real easy one for utilization of the cares money that the states received. There, there is FEMA money that can go to our, our nonprofit hospitals, but some of our for-profits aren't allowed to access FEMA funding. And so we need to take care of them. Along those same lines, you know, there's been talk about construction of new facilities and I'm not going to weigh into that one completely, but I do think some low hanging fruit, and I've looked at the, the directive that was sent out from the, the Department of Treasury with the guidelines. And I think one of the areas that we could really utilize this and also help our economy. A lot of our hospitals really weren't prepared. They, they have one isolation room with negative pressure flow. It would be easy for us to, to increase our access and increase our capabilities by starting conversions of existing patient rooms. So they do have that ability to isolate patients. I think it fits right into the, the guidance that's been delivered from, from the Treasury Department. I, I also think in long-term care, you know, a lot of our facilities are semi-private rooms. And what we found is cohabitation causes spread of, of the disease or of the virus. And so converting from semi-private rooms to private rooms, investing so that we have that isolation and that social distancing. I think again, would be a very easy one for us to justify and utilize the state cares funding. Some of the, some of the areas I think that are a little bit more innovative, but that also makes sense. And, and along with what AARP said, we have already been helping our members in the long-term care facilities. So there are civil monetary penalties that our, our nursing homes are assessed if they, if their survey doesn't go the way it's supposed to. That those monies are put into a tranche of money if, and a percentage that has to be held back by the state in case one of the nursing homes has issues. But there's quite a bit of money in there. And so the Department of Health has been helping us, but we've actually helped write the grants. And we're getting iPads for all of our nursing homes so that they can, so that they can, the residents can be in contact with their loved ones. We're just finalizing a lot of those grants. Some of them have already been accepted and the equipment is being purchased. So we're, we're working on that one. But telehealth is a huge issue right now. And I think one of the things we've seen through coronavirus is an emergence of the utilization of telehealth in our state, a lot more than we've ever seen before. But we're still finding a lot of areas in our state that have dead spots where there's not even 4G where you can't get cell service, let alone internet. And so I really am hopeful that we can take a look at these fundings and work on infrastructure and connectivity so that we can ensure that there's access to care for all of our residents across the state. And we, we're also working with the coalition. I know that a lot of the telehealth or the telecom companies are aware of the money that's out there and they're interested in helping us with that. But I think there's a real strong opportunity for us there to enhance what we already have and to strengthen it. The, the, the other two or three things that I'd really like to focus on real quickly. One of the things that's happened through this whole process is our hospitals have received some federal funding. They've received money in three different tranches. There was $30 billion that was allocated to facilities that accept and bill Medicare. And, and that was the first tranche of money that came out. And most of, most providers in the state received some of that. Then later on, there's another $20 billion that went out to all providers. And in that first 30 billion, there were folks that were excluded from that. If they had a high Medicare advantage payer mix, or if they didn't do Medicare billing, they, they didn't receive any money. And so the 20 billion went to a larger pool of people and it was a lot less money. And then finally, the most important one that just happened about a week ago is there was $10 billion that went specific to rural facilities. And that one helped our state more than any. We received close to $100 million in our state from that one. And it's really helped to put struggling facilities back, at least where, where they have money to operate. In addition to that, the PPP program that came out through the SBA. Originally, it was for employers that had under 500 employees. But in the, the first go-around, nonprofits were exempted from that. So our critical access hospitals that are either hospital districts or memorial hospitals were excluded. They couldn't participate in that. But when it was reauthorized, the more money was put back into it. Senator Brasso did a lot of work back in DC. And our critical access hospitals, to my knowledge, all of them that were eligible and wanted to have accessed that funding. And it's helped to ensure that they have payroll for up to eight weeks for their employees. And we've seen huge layoffs, huge cuts, furloughs going on. So one of the things that I, I would be interested in proposing is, and I heard from the banking association, but creating a similar program for the larger employees, employers of over 500 and utilizing the cares funding to help our larger hospitals that have not had access to those grants. And that's the nice thing about it is the PPP is a grant program. It doesn't require repayment. And so one of the things I would propose is looking at some way that we can help our larger facilities to ensure that they're able to meet their payroll needs. I, I think you would realize how difficult it is when we lose our, our important staff members because of furloughs, trying to bring them back. And, or else trying to recruit new people and bring them in and do the training. It's, it's very difficult to, to maintain the, the level of service that we have. The other thing is that's happened is most of our hospitals around the state have stopped all the elective procedures and all of their diagnostic testing. And so we saw decreases in revenue of like 60 or 70% for some of them. While they still had to maintain their high overhead to, to ensure that they had their emergency room and everything they needed in case we had heart attacks or COVID patients, wherever it might be. And so right now they're starting those elective procedures, but it's going to take a while for confidence to come back, for people to feel like it's right to go to the hospital and for us to be able to meet all the requirements of the CDC that we have, all the testing that we need, and that we also have the PPE in place. But those have started around the state and they're doing it in a tiered approach. They're taking a very measured and cautious approach, but as, as you're aware, surgeries and diagnostic testing is probably about the only place where healthcare workers make money. And then medicative expansion, of course, is, is important. And I think one thing that we've seen, and, and I'm really grateful to the, to our state Medicaid officers and, and to Terry Green. They increased the reimbursement in our long-term care facilities for the 17 days of March and for the whole month of April by $85 per day per Medicaid patient. And so for the first time in a long, long time, we basically covered the cost of what it, it costs on a daily basis to take care of a Medicaid patient. But that rate went away and it's been lowered again, starting May 1st. I would hope that we could backfill and utilize the cares money to make sure that we are covering the cost of taking care of our Medicaid patients. And as you can imagine, with the lockdowns and with the, all of the different things that our nursing homes have put in place, their costs have increased. Admissions have decreased because people aren't really going into nursing homes right now for fear of coronavirus. And so our nursing homes are struggling right now. So covering the, the, the cost of treating those Medicaid patients would be a great thing. We're also seeing an increase in bad debt and uncompensated care. And as we've seen layoffs and, and things going on around the state. More and more uninsured. One area that I would hope that we could look at would be the bad debt and the uncompensated care of our hospitals and maybe use the cares money to backfill that. Especially when they've lost all the other revenue by not doing the elective procedures. And then I think Medicaid expansion, we've talked about it for years, but I think this is a really good time to take another look at it. A real critical look and I appreciate it being one of the things that's being considered in the interim. But that, I, I, I'd answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Bowley or the Wyoming Hospital Association? Seeing none at this time. Thank you very much, Mr. Bow, Representative Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess I'll, I appreciate the testimony and certainly gave some very specific examples. As I've mentioned previously, I know, I'm sure, as we have talked individually, you're forwarding these on to the executive branch for their consideration in that process. Some of these things are actually longer-term things and I'll, I'll speak specifically to the, the long-term care reimbursement issue, which we need a rebasing of. So that we can actually get to what the cost of long-term care is and have a basis upon which to make determinations and set reimbursement rates. So some of these things are access to federal funds. Some of them require actually more work. And I know that's something you're advocating for as well. And so hopefully that's part of the conversation as we go forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further comments? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Bowley.
Thanks, Joe.
Tuesday. And now committee, we have one more person on the list, Mr. Edwards from Star Valley. Then we'll take about a 10-minute break and come back roughly at 3:45 and go through the public comments that have been emailed or that are on YouTube to us. So with that, Mr. Edwards, welcome to the listening session. The floor is yours.
Good morning or good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Thank you for allowing me a few moments to speak with the committee Wyoming Attorney Jack Edwards from Aetna. And I'd like to specifically comment about the workers' compensation portion of the legislation that's before you. House Bill 1002 and Senate File 1002. I think it's important that the people of the state of Wyoming know a little bit about the workers' compensation system here. It's a state monopoly system. It's not managed by private health insurers. The, the funds for the coverage for the employees of the state of Wyoming are paid by Wyoming employers into a fund that's managed by the state and administered by the state. The legislation, as I see it, results in no additional costs to the taxpayers or the employers who have workers' compensation coverage. In fact, the legislation shows that the, any COVID-related illnesses will not count against the employer's experience rating. And of course, the experience rating is essentially similar to your auto insurance or your home insurance when you have a claim and your premiums go up. So we see that as no additional cost to the employers. And that, that seems good. If there is any fiscal impact because of the premium credit, it appears that it's going to be taken out of the fund or at least part of the injured workers fund that exists that's fairly sizable to absorb whatever additional costs there are. Why is this legislation important? I think it's important for a number of reasons. First of all, there are individuals who are out that are being exposed to others and potentially exposed to coronavirus who might not otherwise be exposed to these. Because typically, under the state statutory scheme we have right now, it, it more or less takes into account first frontline workers like healthcare and law enforcement EMS services. But now you have a situation where folks that are working in grocery stores, pharmacies, providing fuel delivery and food delivery and such are now potentially out and about where they might otherwise be at home with their family and being isolated. So if, if the coverage is afforded to these folks, if the legislation passes, there's, there's some benefit to the people of the state of Wyoming because these individuals might not otherwise be covered under a, a health plan. And the, the cost for hospitalization for coronavirus-related illness can be extremely high. So the coverage would first of all come out of the workers' compensation fund. That would, you know, prevent some of our Wyoming medical providers from having bad or uncompensated care debt. That would provide for that, so provide funding for the hospitals that are going to provide the services regardless of a person's ability to pay. But also, the workers' compensation benefits are going to provide wage replacement for these workers while they are unable to work. And so that prevents a burden on the unemployment system that they would otherwise have to dip into. And, you know, worst of all, folks who contract coronavirus related illnesses might have to file bankruptcy. And and that would, you know, eliminate all these debts that these individuals have and have intended to pay but for being infected by the coronavirus. So I see a tremendous benefit from this legislation as it is written for the people of the state of Wyoming. And lastly, the workers' compensation coverage is beneficial to workers who might, because of their preexisting condition, their age, what have you. If they if they have permanent disability as as a result of this illness, let's say that they they've already, they're susceptible, right? They have whatever kind of breathing difficulty or anything related to that. It would provide disability benefits for them for the for the long term, either if they have lost earning capacity or if they're totally disabled. That would provide them the opportunity for those benefits that might otherwise fall onto Medicaid if they need ongoing healthcare services and the social security system by way of social security disability. Lastly, if someone were to die unfortunately from coronavirus and it's a work related illness, there's a there's a benefit for their family and surviving beneficiaries out there for them. My comments to the committee were along the lines of what do we do with the individuals who actually have already had the coronavirus, have the coronavirus and have made a claim? It seems to me that it's extremely important that there be some directive to the executive branch to reevaluate the claims that have already come through. There was an article in the Jackson Hole News and Guide recently that showed that at the time, there had been around twenty-three claims for coronavirus related illness. There was only one accepted at the time, ten had been denied, and the remaining amount were in a pending status. Would like to get updated information on how many claims have been made. But regardless of that, if this legislation passes, it's important that the executive branch go back and reevaluate those claims, go through the redetermination process that is in place according to twenty-seven fourteen six oh one, I believe, and then notify those workers of of the redetermination and afford them the the opportunity to contest their claim if it's denied again. Finally, it's just a small point, but I believe that the existing rules and regulations of the workers' compensation actually allow for testing at the division's cost for workers, regardless of whether or not their claim is found compensable. And I think that it would be important for the division to to rightly follow the legislation to have any of those individuals who were suspected of having some type of coronavirus or lung related illness, pneumonia, to have them tested for the antibody and then retroactively award them benefits if if that's found to be the case. With that, Mr. Chairman, I yield my time and answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Edwards? Seeing none, really, Senator Docstetter.
Just really quick, then, Jack, as we walk away from this, you see what we have is adequate for the cause. So I just want to make sure we understand that before we walk away.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's the best we can do right now. You know, Wyoming's Wyoming Wyoming's Worker Workers' Compensation Fund is only mandatory for extra hazardous employees. An extra hazardous employees is defined by statute. And individuals who are like me, like little office worker people that just type, I'm not in extra hazardous employment. And I've opted into the system, so I pay a premium for my employees and myself, and I'm entitled to coverage. But there are a number of employees out there that don't have any coverage because the state doesn't require it. And so, you know, I don't I don't know if we can fix that right now. That that's my only concern, Senator.
Okay, Representative Barlow and then Representative Connolly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that's actually just the point I was going to bring forth. And thank you, Mr. Edwards, for keying in on, I think, something that's a very important part of this work that we're undertaking is not everybody's covered under workers' comp. And should we have some discussion in a second thing, second, or maybe next general session about how we make sure folks do have some level of access for these type of concerning pandemics or whatever? So I appreciate you bringing that up, and I think that it is worthy of a continued conversation. I will say that I mentioned earlier that there are there are continuing discussions about that component of the legislation. I think that the the access and the main points will still be there, but there's some nuances in words and things that you you are, as an attorney, you will understand that we want to make sure clear for both the employer and for the system so that we are both identifying those who are eligible correctly and providing the maximum amount of benefit should there be a need of a claim. So I think you're going to see potentially some amendments, but hopefully they they improve where we are and are further take care of the circumstances you're talking about, not dilute it. So thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
Okay, Representative Connolly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And honestly, I'll just pile on with with the comments from the two previous. Thank you, Mr. Edwards, for being being here. And again, I think you've heard the language of first things first, and this is a bill that looks at our existing workers' comp and kind of moving forward and what we can do. You have us looking backwards, but then we we understand that there's a big issue out there of the many workers in Wyoming who are not covered under the current workers' comp system. So what do we do about them? And that is one of those, what we call those COVID nineteen topics that's been assigned to a standing committee. And I believe the Labor Health Committee has workers' comp as one of its COVID nineteen. And and we would very much appreciate you staying engaged and your your thoughts in that regard.
Okay. Any follow up, Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm I'm really pleased to hear you, Representative Connolly and Representative Barlow, that you're keyed in on this issue. And, you know, I, as I looked at the legislation, I had thoughts of maybe I'd like to see a little bit of language here. But you know, through the legislative process, you fiddle with something too much and you might not get anything about what you want. And so I I'm going to reserve my thoughts on on that comment. You know, we're going to have to face facts that we still are the, we're number one on the wrong list. And that is work occupational related death in the state of Wyoming. And I'm committed to preventing that. It's too precious of a resource to see those folks go. So we're going to have to have a full court press on not only the safety side, but the coverage side. And on the coverage side, you know, perhaps I'm wrong because I I don't do underwriting and and such for insurance companies. But I would believe that more participants in the system would be beneficial to the system at large, especially because these folks who are extra hazardous are less likely to get hurt at work. And so, you know, for fear of of fiddling too much with this legislation, you know, it would be nice to see more comprehensive coverage for Wyoming workers. I think it's it's something that we really need to think about for the future because I think it benefits all of us.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Edwards, for being with us this afternoon and certainly taking those comments forward into the Labor and Health Committee. Committee, with that, that is the end of the people who have asked to testify for us. So if you're a member of the public and you still have an outstanding question, the committee is going to take about a ten minute break. And then we'll come back and go through the, I think, two email questions and three comments on YouTube so far. Knock those out, but we'll give you another five to eight minutes. If there is any other outstanding questions out there, to please submit them. And committee, with that, let's reconvene at three fifty. I'd ask you to make sure you're muted and your video is stopped, and we'll reconvene in about ten minutes. Thank you. All right, committee or listening session committee as it is, welcome back. Give it a second for everyone to get back to their screens. And then for members of the public, we've had, I think, six questions submitted, several through email, four or five on our YouTube chat. Several through email, four or five on our YouTube chat to bring forth to help inform the committee before the special session on Friday. So as I give our two senators another minute, just a reminder to the audience, this is a listening session in preparation for the special two day session starting this Friday. Where we right now have four bills before us. There'll be mere bills in the House and the Senate being amended and discussed simultaneously. And then the hope is to get through all four pieces of legislation on Friday, maybe early Saturday, and then have conference committees to work out if there are any disagreements or amendments. Bring those back to the floor in both bodies and hopefully conclude our two day session with four quality pieces of legislation to help the executive branch as we move forward. Work in tandem with the legislative branch to get money where it needs to throughout the state. I see Senator Case is back. And Senator Doc's better.
Yeah, I need Anthony to open it up. It says host has to.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Senator Case.
My internet's not going to be strong enough to let me do the chat room dialogue at the same time I'm zooming. So can you handle that?
Yes, Senator Case, then committee, I was hoping to have LSO staff bring forth some of the questions from the chat. And just for our listening, and then if we have any comments on some of those questions, we can certainly answer them at that time.
I have reviewed them a bit, Mr. Chairman. A lot of them are commenty and a lot of them are a little bit pithy. But I think we could probably handle it. I don't think we actually have to answer all of them.
And not create a feedback loop. All right. So if you have the YouTube pulled up, I'll try my best to walk through the first comments on the First Amendment, the Fourteenth Amendment, due process, the US Code. And to remember that the federal government money comes with strings. Certainly, there are some questions on why we need to accept this money as a state. Moving on, then Mr. Olson has a comment on the best way to stimulate the economy is to get government out of the economy. And I'm reading. Encouraging us to convene or not, but try to have public meetings. I know there's certainly concern out there that this is a very quick process, but as we testified earlier, this is really about getting money out as quick as we can. And then there's likely additional special sessions to come before us in the interim. And so committee, I can't see any of your hands or faces as I'm reading. So just shout out any commentary should you have that.
Mr. Chairman, I can see them, so I'll filter for you. Anybody want to comment at any point? Keep going, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then Ms. Minio has the same comments as Mr. Merrill with some great recommendation accolades. Ms. Lau wants to know if the Senate and House will be streamed separately so they can watch both on different devices. Senator Rothfuss answered that question that yes, we will have two different streams going, one for the House, one for the Senate. Simultaneously. There are other people discussing the need to find solutions for nonprofits, including Knowles and Lander, and the difficulty they're having fiscally right now. Ms. Glaner encourages members of the committee to go back and watch discussion on Medicaid expansion and how the one size does not fit all, especially in Wyoming. Mr. Olson agrees with that. Then there's some discussion on Medicaid expansion, which I'll remind the committee has been assigned to the Revenue Committee, but isn't of our, as of now, the four bills before us on Friday and Saturday. And Jamie.
Jamie.
Let me mute Jamie. There we go. And moving on, talking about small businesses and the needs to get them enough funds as well. And the need not to be charging people unnecessary fees as we're trying to get the economy back together. Carla, who was slated to testify, submitted her comments, written comments, but she was unable to get into the chat room. Brian Farmer from the School Boards Association thanks us all for our hard work and wants to know if stakeholders will be able to testify without signing up in advance. I think that's.
Got Rothfuss. Okay, anybody else want to address that?
Saying, I think that's a individual committee chairman.
You got Connolly?
Sure, Connolly, go ahead.
Got to move.
Sorry. Thank you. And just for folks out there, honestly, we're experimenting today with what it would be like to have a chat function, what it would be like to let people into a room. We're just trying our best. And so for folks out there, you have other ideas. You know, we're in a Zoom world right now. If you've been on meetings that are working differently and better, please let us know about it. That's what we're trying to do today is that experiment a bit so that we can get the most public testimony possible. I see that there's a suggestion in here about Zoom breakout rooms, maybe for listeners or participants. You know, I put that down on a list of let's take a look into that and see if that's possible. Again, we're looking for your suggestions. Thanks.
And then Mr. Farmer's question is about being able to testify without signing up in advance. I do believe at least how my committee, our committee is going to schedule is if you do wish to have public comment at certain points in our agenda, we'll be having people sign up in advance. And then we'll have open public comment towards the end of each day and open public comment periods throughout the revenue meeting. And your Committee on Tech process will be encouraging other committee chairman to adopt similar processes to both have people who do want to sign up for specific public comment times and then have general public comment at various points throughout the day. Moving through the questions, the Counseling Association echoes the Wyoming Education Association's comments with Medicaid expansion due to the high wave in mental health needs that's forthcoming. Certainly, there are some comments that this is increasing in socialism and we need to remember the government's proper and legal role. And then we're some word suggestions on nonprofits taking the lead and especially nonprofits working with food banks. More comments on Medicaid expansion and whether that's a positive or negative for the state of Wyoming. We discussed the breakout room idea on how members of the public and lobbyists, et cetera, can come in and testify in Zoom meetings, how they can be admitted and comment in real time. And certainly, your Committee on Tech process is working on ensuring that works. We talked about mail-in ballots and as the Secretary of State mentioned, that he believes he has capability to make things work in certain instances, depending on where we are here in several months. Talking a bit about absentee voting and if there's any processes that need to be looked on in absentee voting. Certainly, the Corporations Committee under Representative Lindholm and Senator Landon will be looking at that at their interim meetings if there's additional legislation or statutory authority when it comes to absentee voting, mail-in ballots and the associated issues with those. Have some shout outs to healthcare workers, some shout outs to legislators, and also the difficulty coming forward with wildfires. We did not have a significant wildfire season last year. But on top of everything else, we need to be keeping the wildfire season in mind. Talking more about nonprofits and House Bill 104 and Senate File 1004.
Rothfuss.
Rothfuss comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the suggestion here is that it's explicitly left out of House Bill 1004. And it refers to businesses. Typically, in statute, when we refer to businesses, we're referring to all types of businesses where nonprofit corporations are considered to be businesses. There was some discussion as to whether or not we should explicitly include it. I tried to make that motion to explicitly include it. I think the rest of the committee felt that it was unnecessary because we commonly understand that nonprofits are businesses, but that's something we'll continue to look into. And it is a point of concern. I think the intent is for nonprofit corporations to be considered businesses and would therefore be otherwise covered by that piece of legislation. Thank you.
Then furthering in the chat, reminding us that industry representatives are not direct representatives of Wyoming citizens. The Wyoming Nurses Association gives a shout out to Representative Barlow and his comments on acute and long-term care facilities. Some discussion on the COVID-19, whether or not that's been misguided in the reporting and what the case count actually is. And then some disagreement on the COVID-19 and the significance to the nation and to Wyoming about what we should be doing moving forward. A shout out from someone in Hungary asking what the weather is like in Wyoming.
Call Rothfuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's actually very nice here right now. Thank you.
Thank you for that. It's not great in Cheyenne right now. It's been a little foggy. And then Mr. Wood did ask about if we could have some prior notice. I think Mr. Merrill discussed this on our meetings, both for special session and through the interim, having some signage so people can log on ahead of time before a meeting starts and not have to keep refreshing the page to ensure they get the up-to-date information. And so we'll certainly work with LSO technology and process on trying to start those live streams earlier with those messages that say we'll convene shortly.
Rothfuss.
Go ahead, Chris or Senator Rothfuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are some minor challenges with that, just based on how our licenses work with the software product where we can't have a bunch of simultaneous live pages. And if we have conflicting meetings, the overlap becomes a challenge. So I think that's often doable, but sometimes may not be.
Then committee, it appears we had enough followers for us to make one of those, check out this YouTube channel because we had a large amount of people jumping in to see what we were all about and asking various questions about what this was and why we were doing it, mostly not from Wyoming. But apparently YouTube thinks we are amazing and so they're suggesting us to people around the country to watch.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Senator Rothfuss.
Thanks. I just want to give a shout out to DJ who wishes his government would do something like this. We do too, DJ. We do too.
And then finally, Ms. Wilkinson from Property and Casualty saying the public comment Zoom rooms would be great. And I certainly agree with that if we can find ways to make that work as we continue to figure out this whole process moving forward. And so that's the primary comments I saw from reading through the YouTube chat. I did have several emails come in to my inbox. I don't know if anybody else did. One is regarding the state treasurer and how the state treasurer is involved in handling the federal funds because the state treasurer, under our statutory laws, is responsible for handling this money. And then the follow up to that is how are we providing transparency and accountability in spending those COVID funds? Eric, Representative Barlow, if you'd like to take that one on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I don't know that I can speak to all of the responsibilities to state treasurer. But certainly, as we know, the federal funds have been received in their totality. They are being held and actually invested on behalf of us right now at the state treasurer's office. And as there are disbursements, the state treasurer will mobilize funds as appropriate. Within the accountability, the second question is transparency and accountability. Several of the components within the bills have the slipboard involved. And so there will be an accounting and a process established to the slipboard for many of these funds. Second, I think both the state auditor and the governor's office have currently have accountability pages for funding for funds. And we can certainly make the request and suggestion to them that they have a separate chapter, if you will, within that, there are differing formats to track these. And I think those are both are good examples, are good suggestions. And I personally will put that forward as a suggestion both to our treasurer, auditor and the governor's office.
Great. And both the governor and the auditor have new systems, especially the Wyoming State Auditor has developed very strong financial tracking and I would assume she will be utilizing that as we draw down this money and encumber it throughout the year. Other comments on that committee? Anyone else in the committee have any? I don't see any other comments coming in. I did have one request briefly to talk about what the slipboard is. The State Land Investment Board is made up of our five statewide elected officers, the governor, secretary of state, auditor, treasurer and superintendent of public instruction. And they said as a five-member board, in this process, the slipboard will be approving the monies going out and two of the bills.
Mr. Chairman, were you able to get through all the email correspondence?
Senator Case, that was the, the two major questions I had were on the state treasurer and on the transparency and accountability of this funding. And we do have two branches of government, I think, will be monitoring the transparency and accountability of the spending throughout the process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nice job on running the meeting.
Yeah. So if there's any other closing comments from anyone, any committee member or anyone from LSO? Saying none, just a reminder, we started 8:00 AM on Friday morning with.
Barlow.
Representative Barlow.
Thank you, Chairman. So I'd like to commend Chairman's, or monitor Chairman Case for implementing this process today. I think it's been informative and educational in two different ways. Informative on the questions we got and educational on how some of the process works and may need to be refined. So I do appreciate your, your voting us on, if it will, or encouraging that we initiate some of these processes. So well done to you and well done to our staff who is behind the scenes giving us these tools to do the job that we we need to do and we are committed to do on behalf of the citizens of Wyoming. So thank you very much. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you to our staff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, with that committee, we'll end the special listening session. If you're a member of the public, please remember you can look at wyolg.gov. Copies of all four pieces of legislation, as well as information on how to view the list, view the special session are all on the webpage, how to submit comments, et cetera. So please look at those four bill drafts. You can also see who your elected representative and elected senator are, district maps, financial information of the state. So it'll certainly be an important page moving forward in this interim. And look forward to everyone joining us for special sessions starting this Friday.